Don, can you hear us?
Don, can you hear us?
Jill, did you just selfie us?
Yeah.
Jill, was that the selfie that you just took?
It's not over yet.
Okay.
She was practicing.
I saw you. I saw you.
Isn't it fun in public when you like catch people doing it, like just do themselves, like gotcha?
It's not so complicated.
Hello, they did away with dial up yesterday.
Print's on the computer, get off the phone.
Don, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can hear you, but the audio, the audio is kind of blurry.
Audio's blurry? Here we go. Too many zooms and zoms.
How much time you need?
Just connect on. Hopefully.
Had a good argument with my partner, but what is time? What is time? Can you describe time without service time?
Okay, Don, is that better to hear us?
Yes, much better.
Awesome.
Okay, let's try it again.
You gotta wait for him to say yes.
He did.
Those are the kind of talks you have at three o'clock in the morning.
I'll ask my eleven year old, he'll probably have an answer.
Please, don enlighten me afterward.
No, for every minute we're behind schedule, that's two bucks out of your petty.
That's, yeah, okay, this make, means that so far, that means I'm paying to be here.
So it's always a process. I am enlightened, I am also deenlighted at the same time, so it's professional.
Already in the hole.
Okay, I think we're ready.
Okay, let's try it again. The, we have, Board of Almena shall come to order, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Moore's.
Here.
Ballard. Ross. Sagasor.
Here.
Rains.
Here.
Neil.
Present.
Wilson.
Present.
With seven present, we have a quorum, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the amended agenda which will, whoop. But, which shall include bill number twenty twenty-five forty-eight, for which all of you should have a copy.
Second.
Okay, have, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have adopted the agenda, and in keeping with the levity that characterizes this group, and the frivolity that we usually mix ourselves with, Jill will come forward with an important program.
Okay, today is City Hall selfie day, and I've been waiting all day for this moment to have everybody here in the building so we could get a City Hall selfie to post on social media.
That means our city administrator.
Yes, everybody, everybody.
Oh.
Come up here. You don't have to, I'm not gonna make you.
So what do we do?
If you wanna come stand up here by our.
Stand here? Get over here, Brian.
Well, you never thought you were gonna get this, did you?
We want our citizens to be engaged with our media.
Yeah, right, okay. Come on, chief, get over here.
Come on, Pat.
Come on, chief, get over here, guys, come on, here we are. Yeah, aren't we, aren't we betties? That's right, that's right, one big happy, one big happy.
Okay, ready, one, two, three, look at me, got it?
Is that a selfie?
That's what we're all asking, guys.
All right, guys, are you ready? Got it.
Six of them. Does a self-taking screen happen?
In keeping with the seriousness with which we usually conduct ourselves.
That's right.
All right, a special event application with SBU cross-country. Do we have somebody here? I bet we have the cross-country coach. Introduce yourself and tell us about what you got going.
Yes, sir, my name's Corey McLehaney, I'm the head track and cross-country coach at Southwest Baptist University, and we have the event over on the city golf course, I think, I wanna say this is at least ten, ten, year number ten that we've been out there. It's been a great event, I'll be able to work together with Coach Mandy there at the high school, so we actually, it's kind of fun, me and him get together and be able to put the course together and just the community event that that brings in. So typically, we go on a Friday night to let the, the high school and middle school and junior highs go on Saturday morning just to ensure that it's not too hot for them later in the day. This year, I'm kinda, I'm being a little bit like, okay, well, my kids, I wanna try to let them go in the morning. So we were gonna go on Friday morning this year, which I would get everything set up before Friday, and it's there on the city course, and then they would come in and compete there on Saturday morning with their, theirs is a lot bigger scale than mine, but, you know, we have about eight teams typically, around a hundred athletes that run in each gender, so two races, yes, yes, sir.
Good, good. Anything else that we need from, from us, just the approval, I guess the approval's already done, I guess, Kyle?
Say any questions for me?
Oh, no, no, it's, uh.
The entire staff reviews the packages, we, we think it's, everything's okay.
All right, do we need a motion of any kind?
Make a motion to approve the special event application.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the ayes have it, we have approved the track, the SBU cross-country meet to be on Friday and Saturday, is that what it is?
Well, the high school meets on Saturday, but for our college meet, it's on Friday, yes, sir.
All right.
Yep. Side note, I just wanna say.
Go ahead, Mr. Ross.
Congratulations, you were just inducted into the.
SBU Hall of Fame, yes, sir. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Will that be all, sir?
I think so. Thank you very much.
We appreciate all that goes on at SBU.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, okay, we, I think maybe we have some dog people here, and, uh, in keeping with the seriousness that we usually conduct ourselves.
There is no such thing. For those who don't know who I am, I'm Pat McGowan, better known as Justin's father-in-law, and we have a good time together. So what we're here tonight to do, and we appreciate the opportunity to come and kind of give you folks an update on what's been going on with the dog park situation, and Catherine is handing out copies of our logo for you to take a look at. She worked diligently to get this in conjunction with Thane Kiefer and, I think Jill. Jill.
Andrew.
Andrew, yeah.
The city.
And, so this is kind of the approved dog park. You'll notice it has the vineyard in the top, which I think is in keeping very well with the, that's the name of his, of Thane's development, it's always been, that area's always been called the Vineyard, so since he's donating the land, we wanted to put his, give him some recognition on that by using that name. And of course, the city is on theirs as well, everybody knows that it's gonna be a city-owned and operated park when it gets, when it gets finished. Another thing that has been going on is we've met with the Friends of the Park folks who, that's Corey Rich's group, and the purpose of that meeting is to try to use their umbrella for their five oh one, I get confused, five oh one three C, tax shelter or tax ability for our donors to get tax deductible status for their donations. And I also, and we're also working with, trying to get a community block grant with Lindsay Godfrey's group, we're gonna be applying for that, and the Community Connections Group, I think that's chaired by Carol Bookout from the mental health, or not the mental health, the Health Center, and I had talked to her, that's matter of fact, this afternoon, and so that's gonna be proceeding here in the near future, so we have the potential of being able to get somewhere in the neighborhood of five thousand dollars worth of grants from those two entities, from the Community Block Grant Association and from the community, whatever the other, Community Connections. So we're looking forward to getting started with that. We've gotten started really big on a couple of events that's gonna be going on here pretty, pretty soon. The first is the Country Days, of course, on September sixth, and we've got booth space, booth space reserved for that. Also, we'll be selling T-shirts there that Catherine has already sold enough advertising on that to pay for the initial batch of shirts, so every shirt that's sold will be profit, and we hope to do, you know, quite a bit of money from, from that. The other event that's coming up real shortly, it seems like a ways away, but October the seventeenth will be here before we know it, we're having a fundraising gala, gala at the Rec Center, which is going to include a fundraising dinner. In association with that or at that event, there will be a live band, and there will be a live auction as well as a silent auction, so we hope to raise a ton of money off of that. We'll be getting the, some invitations out pretty soon, and it's gonna be open to the, to the, anybody that wants to come.
Did I miss the date and time on that?
October seventeen, yes, I believe.
It's a Friday.
It's a Friday and it's six o'clock, isn't it?
Six o'clock.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
That kind of wraps up the events going on right at the moment. We have plans to sell park benches there for folks that want to make a larger donation and have an honorary or memorial bench in the park. We'll also be selling pavers, like patio pavers, bricks, to people who want to have, they have a special pet who's alive for an honorary or a special pet who has gone on and a memorial. I have a couple of in mind for myself on that. So those are kind of the fundraising events we have going on right now, and as far as I'm concerned, that kind of wraps up what I had to say. I do wanna answer any questions or.
Open price.
The gala, how can someone get tickets, or do you pay at the door?
We'll be having those out available pretty soon.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and we'll have information out. The first thing we'll see about it is gonna be on Justin's electronic billboard, which he graced, I had to really twist his arm to get, to get him to give us some advertising space on there, but we will be getting information out shortly for tickets. I don't know, at the, at this point, that's.
So you're sending out formal invitations, and each of you will receive one, um, so.
So we should all post it to our Facebook pages?
Yes, you can share as much as you want, but we will send out, formal invitations are going out.
Yeah, but it's not gonna be invitation only, if anybody that wants to buy a ticket and make an donation is very, very welcome.
Mr. Ross?
I mean, I just wanted to say, I definitely appreciate all the hard work and effort that your group has put in. I know I'm in a couple of text threads with logos and other things, and I've seen, you know, kind of firsthand how, you know, how hard you guys have been working at it, so, you know, anytime we can add something like this to the community and, you know, raise funds for it through, you know, through this effort is, is awesome, and I really appreciate all the work you guys have done.
Well, thank you, I need to introduce the other folks that are here. Ed Kurtz is out of town, y'all know Ed, he's why you're stuck with me tonight. Catherine Semanis, she's been a long-time fundraiser and is an expert with getting stuff done. And Karen Tweed, Karen's been in the, in the beginnings of the park from the beginning. In fact, her late husband Larry was one of the first to mention bringing a dog park to Ballver some five, six years ago. And Karen is a very hard worker, and imagine even got a level head too, which kind of makes up for me. So anyway, guys, that's kind of what I have, if you don't have anything else, we're outta here.
Further questions, comments?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And she's in charge of the gala, and she's.
And the pavers.
She's going to invite all of the Ballver restaurants in town to help with food, supply the.
Yeah. It'd be kind of a taste of Ballver kind of situation. I forgot, didn't have my glasses on to see that. Anything else on that?
Comments, questions, okay?
Okay, thank you all for letting us come and share with you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Eisenberger, you're up next.
I'm Tanner Eisenberger. Can I take, before I get started on this, just like one minute for a personal comment?
Oh, you may.
I just wanna say, good job to the chief and the city administrator for finding him. We had a truck stolen on July third, and the city had it back to us by July fifth. So, police department's doing a great job, I just wanna say, you did a good job hiring. So, onto what I wanna talk about, taxes, mainly property taxes. The State Tax Commission sent out a memorandum of understanding to eighty-eight counties in the state to raise the appraisal rate value practically, thus raising property taxes. Of those eighty-eight counties, thirteen of those have decided not to follow suit 'cause they want it to be raised by fifteen percent in one year, which would be pretty detrimental to people, mainly on like a fixed income and stuff like that, not expecting that big of a rate hike. One of those counties just happens to be our local elected assessor, Rita Lemon, and the main reason I'm coming to you guys is I think this is something good, that the city can maybe do a resolution to say that you support her in her fight against the State Tax Commission, 'cause the State Tax Mission is unelected, they're in Jeff City, they're bureaucrats, they're not here on the ground interacting with our citizens like our county assessor is, and she knows what people can handle. So she's raised it seven point eleven percent, and the State Tax Commission is still asking her to raise another eight percent. I'd be glad to answer any questions about it and how it works.
Questions, comments? Mr. Ross, go ahead, please.
I think it's, it's definitely a good idea to, no whether it's by resolution or, you know, just, there's not really a whole lot we can do other than offer our support. I mean, I think anytime that, you know, something like this, that somebody in Jeff City who doesn't really have a, you know, a pulse on this area saying, hey, just blindly raise it by, you know, by that amount, you know, and the fact that, that she's kind of going out on a limb, I mean, you said eighty-eight counties, thirteen of them are kind of standing up and saying like, hey, that's, that's too much, so yeah, I think, you know, have our weakened support, I think we should, so.
Thank you.
Further comments from the board? Counselor, do we, is there kind of a consensus in the board to move ahead with this? Do, do you wanna take a vote?
I mean, I'd make a motion for a resolution just in support of it if, if that's what we need.
Do we, what is, how's the appropriate process here?
Well, is there a written resolution there for you guys to review and read, or are they just wanting something, just kind of an oral proclamation?
Mr. Eisenberger will have to answer that.
Whatever the board would think would be the most useful.
We do not have a draft currently in front of us, no.
Oh, okay, well, if the board wants to proceed tonight, I mean, any member of the board can, can make a motion for an oral resolution that could show in our minutes that the board supports the representative in their, in their fight against the, the property tax increases.
I wouldn't make that motion.
Okay.
Is that enough, or do you need something written?
I would be perfectly fine with that, I just want to support her in this fight 'cause the State Tax Commission is threatening to withhold funding for the county in response to this.
How, how will our message get to either the county commissioners or to the tax commission?
The State, State Tax Commission has multiple meetings coming up addressing this issue because it has kind of exploded, definitely like, there's one coming up in Macon, I think on the twenty-third, and just being able to say that, hey, the city, the biggest city in this county is in support of this to that commission would be very helpful in their fight, that it's a united front.
All right, so we, we have a motion on the table then to, to lend our, our moral support to, to the, is there a discussion beyond that? We have a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, we have lent our moral support to the effort to try to limit the amount of taxes, tax increases that are being thrust upon us.
I mean, if, if you think a written resolution would help, I'm not opposed to having something written up and at our next meeting in two weeks, voting to approve that resolution so you can actually, you know, if you wanna like take it with them and like roll it out at the meeting, you've got a resolution.
I mean, I, I think that's a great idea, if you guys are willing to do that, I would very much appreciate it. I know the county would appreciate it, you know.
Can, can we do that, Don? Is that a thing?
What should we do, just go ahead and have it written up, or do we need to have it written up and then, and then approve the wording of it?
Well, if, if the city needs to approve it, which we do, I, we would probably need to have it written up and submitted before the next meeting so you guys can have it in your packet, just to make sure there's nothing in there that's not, that's not intended.
Okay.
I, I think that'd be fine.
Okay, we will probably do that, to have it written up, and I'm sure we'll have it approved and present it to the county commissioners.
All right, thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Eisenberger. Okay, I'm entertaining a motion for the first reading of bill number twenty twenty-five.
Just get the one.
Number four.
Oh, oh, oh.
I beg your pardon. All right, well, you know, we have worked this and worked this and worked this, and I think everyone is completely familiar with all the facts and have digested this, so does someone on the board wish to, to make a motion to accept?
I'll make a.
I, I will make a motion to accept something, I, I was gonna let the board member make the specifics of this.
No, it's not, it's, yes.
Does someone?
The city staff has recommended J Mark, this is the IT contract, so I'll make a motion to approve the contract with J Mark.
I'll second it.
We, we have a, a motion and a second, is there further discussion? I think we have discussed this very, very thoroughly, so we will make a motion.
I, I do have something to say, well.
You're, you're, you have the floor.
Thank you. While I appreciate all the time and diligence in this process, um, I'm, I, I, you know, I am okay with accepting J Mark. However, I do not feel that they are providing the sufficient service that we deserve and are paying for, and I did not feel that the representative of J Mark properly answered my questions while here, and I just felt that that should be permitted.
Okay, duly noted, and your vote is your own conscience. We've had, have further con, further questions, further comments? Madam Clerk, I believe, please call the roll.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Rains. Sorry, I couldn't hear over the air conditioner.
Aye.
Aye. Ross.
Aye.
Sagasor.
Aye.
With a vote of seven ayes and zero noes, we have approved the recommendation of the, the staff to, for the contr, the, the information technologies contract with J Mark. I'm entertaining a motion for the first reading of bill number twenty twenty-five forty-four.
First reading, second.
Discussion, Mr. Lee, oh, Mr. Lee. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, there was the first, we didn't get the reading, I'm sorry. Counselor, are you, or you can read bill number twenty twenty-five forty-four?
Yes, sir, this is bill number twenty twenty-five forty-four in ordinance authorizing, oh, in ordinance number forty city, forty sixty-six and ordinance authorizing a service bid in agreement with Trusted Roofing LLC for various roofing projects within the city of Ballver.
Mr. Lee, would you care to elaborate at all, is, is there much elaboration needed?
We approved it last time, second reading.
Okay, no further discussion necessary, we, I'm entertaining a motion for a second reading.
I already had one.
Second. Already did that.
Yep, Justin moved and Brian seconded.
Okay, Counselor?
This is bill number twenty twenty-five dash forty-four, ordinance number forty sixty-six and ordinance authorizing a service bid in agreement with Trusted Roofing LLC for various roofing projects within the city of Ballver.
Counselor, ours is twenty twenty-five forty-four.
Yes, but the ordinance number is forty sixty-six, he assigns the number right now, see the blank at the top right?
Okay. All right, so we're just needing a roll up. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Wilson.
Aye.
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 Ross.
Aye.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
With a vote of seven ayes and zero noes, we have approved of, approved of bill number twenty twenty-five forty-four. I'm entertaining a motion for the first reading of bill number twenty twenty-five forty-five.
First reading.
Second.
Counselor?
This is bill number twenty twenty-five dash forty-five, ordinance number forty sixty-seven and ordinance authorizing a service bid in agreement with Multi-Craft Contractors Incorporated for HVAC repairs and replacement for a conference room located at City Hall.
Comments and questions?
Second reading.
Second.
This is bill number twenty twenty-five dash forty-five and ordinance authorizing a service bid in agreement with Multi-Craft Contractors Incorporated for HVAC repairs and replacement for a conference room located at the City Hall.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Sagasor.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Rains.
Aye.
Ballard.
Aye.
By a vote of seven ayes and zero noes, we've approved bill number twenty twenty-five forty-five. I'm entertaining a motion for the approval of bill number twenty twenty-five forty-six.
Ross.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
By a vote of seven ayes and zero noes, we have approved bill number twenty-two-five-forty-five. I'm entertaining a motion for the first reading of bill number twenty-two-five-forty-six. First reading.
Second.
Counselor?
This is bill number twenty-two-five dash forty-six, in ordinance authorizing a contract with Southern Stone County Fire Protection District for the Baller Fire Department's use of a mobile fire training unit for training purposes.
Comments and questions? Do we need an explanation, Chief? Probably not.
Second reading.
Okay. I'm entertaining a motion for the second reading of bill number twenty-two-five-forty-six.
Second reading.
Counselor?
This is, this is bill number twenty-two-five dash forty-six, in ordinance, in ordinance number, I'm sorry, forty-sixty-eight, in ordinance authorizing a contract with the Southern Stone County Fire Protection District for the Baller Fire Department's use of a mobile fire training unit for training purposes.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ballard.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Sagasur.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Sagasur.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Price. Aye.
Ballard.
Aye.
Sagasur.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Ross.
By a vote of seven ayes and zero noes, we have approved bill number twenty-two-five-forty-seven. I'm entertaining a motion for the first reading of bill number twenty-two-five-forty-eight.
First reading. Second.
Counselor?
This is bill number twenty-two-five dash forty-eight, ordinance number forty-seventy, in ordinance authorizing an amendment to an existing communication services agreement with Windstream for purposes of keeping city communications equipment up to date and functional.
Comments and questions from the board?
Is there change to this?
Chief, could you elaborate, please, sir?
So, last week, we had, that Monday, Tuesday, we got a letter from Windstream saying, due to security upgrades, our current phones will no, will no longer work past August thirty-first.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, so, kind of, that was our thought. So, we've been working with our, with Windstream and our customer manager, and this, they haven't do, they couldn't just send us new phones. They had to give us a contract, which is, you have it for you. It does officially, this one would change the date for, it currently expires July, this would change it to August. But it's the exact same price, not, just getting new phones, but they had to have a contract, get to bring the contract to you all, so that's why it's on the agenda now, so we can get them ordered tomorrow, and hopefully installed, and we have phones by September first. So, that's what this is all about.
Comments and questions?
No, no costs or anything changed. And we will go out to bid next spring for phones.
Mr. Wilson, do you have a comment?
I was answering, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
Do they offer any explanation for the short notification period? Because I would assume that's not standard for them.
We even looked, we went back and looked on bills, seeing if it's, you know, it's in the little note section and things like that. Nothing. They just, all the letter says is, I think Paula brought, is it's, due to security encryption updates, your phones, your phones will stop working.
Did anyone happen to ask the representative that you were dealing with when you were figuring out and talking to people about what?
We had to send a letter to them, of the representative. We had to send our letter to the representative.
Yeah, we had to say, our, they didn't even, I said, we called them last Wednesday, like, hey, what's this? Well, what are you talking about? And then, we had to work our way up the chain. We were getting quotes for price increases, and like, whoa, 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 we're under contract already. Because everyone is like, oh, yeah, we're staying in new phones for new prices. And it's like, we're under a contract till next year. So, it's just been a, I don't know if the right hand knows what the left hand's doing. I'm not just saying bad, but our salespeople didn't have a clue about any of this. So, we're just trying to make sure we have phones. How many phones is this effect? Eighty-two. Eighty, technically, if they upgrade everything, eighty-two, with three speaker phones.
Bryce, did you have a question on that?
So.
Questions and comments? Thank you, Chief Watkins. So, yeah, okay, I am entertaining a motion for the second reading of bill number.
Second.
Counselor?
This is bill number twenty-two-five dash forty-eight, ordinance number forty-seventy, in ordinance authorizing an amendment to an existing communication services agreement with Windstream for purposes of keeping city communications equipment up to date and functional.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ross.
Aye.
Sagasur.
Aye.
Rains.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Ballard.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
By a vote of seven ayes and zero noes, we have approved the bill number twenty-two-five-forty-eight. Item number ten on the agenda. I believe Mr. Ross has some comments that he would like to present.
Did I miss him? No, no, you're good. So, a couple, couple things that have been brought to my attention from some constituents this week. There's a business in town that has been operating without a business license. They've been cited, and it's been in the court system for, I think, probably close to a year now, but they've still been operating the same way, you know, just every day. And it's one of those, they've gotten a ticket, so it's in the court system, but they're still committing the infraction. So, the constituent was like, you know, how, like, why don't you guys do something? And, you know, I equated it to, if I'm driving down Springfield Avenue and I get a ticket for speeding, and then I do the same thing tomorrow and get pulled over, I'm like, oh, I've already got a ticket, it's in the court system, you know. So, it's, it's been, you know, and so I was just gonna kind of, you know, maybe have Thomas chime in, Kyle chime in. You know, is there something that we can do that, yes, you're breaking an ordinance, and it's like, we're gonna let you break it because you've already been cited for it, or is it something that, you know, we could actually say, you're doing it, it's illegal, you know, you can't do it until the, you know, the court comes out? And then, the public nuisance side of it, kind of the same thing. You know, lots of houses that we have dangerous buildings on, different things, tall grass, I get called on, you know, constantly junk in the yard. And, and we have, you know, ordinances in place, and, you know, we kind of had a conversation today, and it's one of those, you know, does the board want us to kind of pursue it a little bit more aggressively than give them ten days, give them more, you know? Because in our ordinance, we can actually hire, you know, like, for example, the yard. You know, we can actually hire a company to go and mow the yards instead of sending a letter, waiting, waiting, you know. And so, my thought was, hey, maybe in the, in the winter, we get bids from different companies and pick one out, and when we send them a letter out saying, hey, you've got ten days to fix it, or the city, you know, can actually hire a company to do that. And so, I just wanted to bring it up for discussion and get everybody's thoughts, and, you know, have Kyle chime in for it, maybe give him some direction on, you know, because again, it's, I, I mean, talking with your code enforcer, I mean, she's writing like thirty-seven infractions a day, it seems like, every time I'm talking with her, you know, it's like, oh, yeah, I've got one there, I got. And so, I don't know if it's just something that, you know, we can do as a board to maybe help you guys out, if you had any ideas. So, I just kind of wanted to bring it up to discuss it, so.
I've got a question.
Mr. Wilson, go ahead, please. Alderman, Ross, hey, I can speak to the business license issue, definitely. I have been aware of that. I think you and I have even talked about that for a while now. So, I, that is completely not any city employee's fault, that is my fault. I need to get that in front of the circuit court and ask them, the circuit court to enjoin them from conducting business. I just have not got into it. So, that, please don't take any offense on the city employees there, that's completely on me, but I'll make sure I get that on the top of my stack. But, but something can be done. The circuit court can issue an injunction.
So, the question, so, ma, maybe you can answer. So, is that something, like, if they get a ticket, say, on a Monday, because they don't have a bus, and then they're open for business on Tuesday and Wednesday, I mean, is that something they could get multiple tickets for? Is it a new infraction every time they do it? Is it one of those that, how, how does that work?
Technically, yes, it's a new infraction every day, but practically speaking, I mean, one infraction is enough. Fines, as you know, don't always solve the problem, but an injunction will. If they get a circuit court injunction, which can be done quickly, once it's in the court system, at that point, they're, they're facing a lot more orders that have some teeth, such as jail time, if, for contempt, stiffer fines than the city can impose, attorney's fees, cost, that sort of thing.
Okay. We had a spirited and protracted discussion about this today, and I think that it's a matter that all, we've all been aware of, and it's kind of a nuisance, not only is it a nuisance for the city, it's kind of a nuisance for, for us as well, trying to get a, a source of constant, frequent complaints, and, you know, as far as the city, but it was, the, the complications of this, as we discussed at length today, are many. They're financial, and they're resources. Mr. Lee, do you want to elaborate at all on this, in my opinion, on this part, about our conversation today?
No, I mean, I don't feel on the spot certainly happy to answer anything specific. And I think it's, you know, valuable conversation to have. It's one we've been trying to have internally more recently, is, is how to speed the process to finality. And, and like we discussed today, I think a good option, it probably isn't viable for this year, just because of the time of year it is, but a good option would be to go out to bid early in the year in twenty-six and acquire the services of, of a lawn service so that we could take more.
And that would be obviously for grass only.
Yes, yeah, and those are.
The other news is about dilapidated buildings and.
Sure, yeah, and so there's a lot of different, I don't want to bel, that just was one thought that, you know, in these discussions seems like a good thing to identify. I think that's something we easily can implement, because we can go out to bid for it if we end up deciding to utilize or not utilize the services. Obviously, that's, you know, at our leisure as it, as those moments come about. So, you know, the abatement cost, and the abatement cost for that is obviously going to be considerably less than the abatement cost for demolition of a structure, or clearing out a yard, or, you know, whatever the other types of abatements that might exist. So, I think that's one good first step that would, it also maybe has some of the higher visual impact. And that just hasn't been the posture, you know, of, of our department in the past. So, I think part of it, the discussion is hearing, the staff has tried to be reflexive of, of what the board desires, you know, and, and many have been on the board for a long time and seen those desires ebb and flow. I think we've, anytime we've, as best we have understood the desires, we have fairly imposed those on everybody. So, it doesn't matter who you are in the city, you're going to get, you know, if, if we're sending out violations for this, you're gonna get a violation for that, if it exists. Yep, you know, everybody might get one. And, and so that's certainly part of the consideration. But, but there, there is some nuance there to be more, to take a more, I don't know if you want to call it an aggressive posture, but take a more, you know, hard, black and white type of posture, and, and a quicker stance. You know, we try to use a little bit of discretion in amount of time and things like that, and, and I think some of that is still going to be necessary. Certainly, we have increased significantly since we hired Danielle in March. We are averaging about triple a month what we were doing before. I mean, part of that's because of the way we reworked our previous staff, was in the office more, doing some clerical type of things, and so we've rearranged some of that, so she has more time and availability for that. But, additional abatements and things like that will be, you know, additional staff load, we'll have to just look at how that fits in with the department. We keep everybody pretty busy all day already, so that'll be part of the consideration. But, I, I would say from my perspective, the thing that is just important to get a sense and understanding of is really what the disposition of every board, every city administrator, and, and I think I have a really good understanding of that from Thomas. We talk a lot about these types of things. So, yeah, really, I, I think, you know, that's the, we talked about, is, is just having a sense of, yeah, it's the board's consideration that these things need to, we need to step up more in our efforts in speed. Do we want to prioritize speed in resolution over, you know, what someone might consider graciousness or friendliness? I don't know what you want to call the other side of that. Obviously, when you emphasize speed, there's someone there who doesn't want it to go that fast, right? The person who gets violation letter. And so, that's what we're just trying to perceive and understand and that kind of thing. And then, we've talked with, you know, Don, and, and we're talking with our department, looking at what other cities are doing about if there's anything we can do in, you know, a, a little bit of a revamp in how we approach it, whether there's an ability to find, or, and those things, they just get complicated, rightly so. You know, we're talking about people's personal property, and so rightly so, there's, there's a level of due process that we don't want to step over by any means, and we want to honor people's, you know, rights and, and their due process, certainly. So, trying to navigate all that, but I guess part of the discussion would just be where, you know, what the board's posture and priority on speed is probably how I would.
Mr. Wilson, go, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Well, I don't know that they're better, but I have four of them. So, they're all related, basically, and these may be more in, in the weeds of, once, once there is a unified.
Nice, nice one.
From the, from the board. Once there's more of a unified approach, then those can be worked out. But the things that immediately came to mind is how common it is for landscape companies to come in and mow someone's yard without the owner's permission, and how eager they would be for safety considerations if someone is not expecting someone to come on their private property and is surprised by that, that that seems like it could end poorly. Whether we would then, as a result, need to devote law enforcement resources, or maybe just private security and abate that cost too, how we would deal with pets potentially on the property that are fenced but existing on grass that's in violation of, of ordinance, and other objects that are in the lawn, that are, maybe, doesn't maybe rise to the level of a yard full of junk where you're looking at that level of, or that type of, of violation, but you can't just mow it because there's stuff there, or someone's gonna have to pick up the stuff and do something with the stuff while they're mowing. So, those, those were just some of the immediate, like, practical, like, wow, this seems like it could be a challenge to deal with. And I don't know if you have already thought of those, or other people have dealt with them, but those were the ones where I was like, I don't want anyone to get shot because they're mowing someone's yard who didn't think they were gonna be there. I don't want a dog to get out or bite somebody, and I don't want, you know, good, you know, just property damaged because we're mowing over it because the person didn't clean up the yard first.
Yeah, besides the, I don't, I can't say I've really thought much, or, and it's a good additional point about the pet aspect, but other, the others we have considered a lot in the past. Part of the discussion of why we haven't taken abatement action has been a security reason. Other cities that are abating, and quite a few are, to be clear. In fact, our ordinance of twelve inches for grass, which I think is the reasonable place where you would see a violation, but it's actually the, the least restrictive of a lot of communities in the area that have code enforcement. And, but they are, the ones that are abating, most frequently, they are designating a, a police officer to be present during that. I think that would probably be necessary. Some of those things are the kind of internal policies we'll have to delineate out if we move into abatement, because security is obviously the, the first priority. You know, obviously, if there's an abandoned property, you're not gonna run into most of those issues.
Right.
But it's the, it's the issues where someone, they don't want you on that property, and you are attempting, and then contractors, and then obviously the other liability side, that would need to be part of our bid packet for any contractor that would go on our behalf onto a property. And ultimately, you know, Don would, we would review that contract and make sure that it's something that would be appropriate. But it, it does open some level of exposure, right? We're now sending someone somewhere on our behalf.
Mr. Wilson?
So, trying to get away from the weeds part. We were talking about business license as well. What is the city's way of knowing who has a business license and not? You know, we had a talk about, we have this business that doesn't have one, but how are we as a city to determine, I mean.
onto a property, and ultimately, you know, Don would, we would review that contract and make sure that it's something that would be appropriate, but it it does open some level of exposure, right, we're now sending someone somewhere on our behalf.
Mr. Wilson?
So trying to get away from the weeds part, we were talking about business license as well. What is the city's way of knowing who has a business license and not, you know, we had a talk about, we have this business that doesn't have one, but how are we as a city determine, I mean, there's probably multiple businesses in town that are probably not having business license, does that make sense?
Yes, ultimately, and Paul, I don't know if you want to speak to the business license side, I don't think we have a particular mechanism that would ring to us in some way if someone's operating without a business license, except for some other citizen or person bringing that to our attention.
Correct.
Yeah.
Is there a way that we can, I don't, I don't, again, I don't want to work more workload on you guys, but in the same way, like, if it's not fair for this business to have a business license and do that process, but if nobody sees this business, like, oh, we're getting away with it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's enforcement, like, was discussed once, once we are aware of it, I don't really know of, you know, I mean, you're you're depending on people's ability to follow the regulations voluntarily, you know, essentially until you know about it, and then you compel them by the court or some other mechanism, but I assume that's really the same with every city and even the state, you know, you can, you can not pay taxes and, you know, you're you're not caught until you're caught, right? And so, I mean, the threat, I guess, to the businesses is it is a, it is a regulation, they're required to follow it, just because they're not caught, doesn't mean they aren't required to follow it, and then when they are, obviously, we try to.
Comments and questions? A question I have to kind of piggyback that. One of the big proponents of a business license is you have, you know, you or Stephen going and inspect the business and make sure that it's got every, you know, up up to where it needs to be and has, if somebody doesn't have a business license, can you still go in there and like inspect the building and say, hey, like, this isn't safe, you can't, you know, be running? If somebody's, you know, says, hey, I've got a restaurant in the shed in my backyard, and, you know, can you go and say this doesn't have the proper, you know, anything in here?
Yeah, and we regularly send letters of, you know, construction without a permit, occupancy without a permit, you know, these types of things, and usually what we receive is compliance, you know, some somebody says, oh, I didn't know, or I forgot, or what, you know, whatever, and that that stuff just happens, you know, we we and we're real friendly about that, it's our initial, it's just a courtesy letter, hey, you know, looks like this is what's occurring, can you reach out to us and tell us if that is the case, and, you know, that's how we begin those conversations. So that's pretty normative, brick and mortar, again, when we become aware of it, you know, sometimes we become aware of it because someone tells me something they saw on Facebook, or somebody just tells me they've been somewhere.
Just, just business inspections, we don't do those here as a city.
We do them for, like, an initial, any new business license that has a brick and mortar location requires an inspection.
And I'm not familiar with the code, but is there still an occupancy number that has to be shown in the front, does the business license have to be next to that up in the front somewhere very visible?
So two things there, so a certificate of occupancy is required for each location, that's the reason for the inspection. Only certain occupancies require a placard notifying the the occupant load, all certificates of occupancy include an occupant load, but only certain ones are required to post it. And then on the point of the business license as well as certificate of occupancy, they just have to have it, the way the code is written, you just have to be able to make it available. Many post it, and that's, you know, kind of a traditional thing that a lot of businesses do, but they can have it in a binder in their office or a file or whatever, it doesn't matter.
Almost sounds like we almost need to do yearly inspections to make sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to, but in the same way, that's going to bog down more employees to not be able to.
Yeah, I mean, the re, we've, we've discussed historically here about the potential of annual inspections and things like that, there's lots of other life safety reasons to do those types of things, we don't currently have the staff that would be capable of that, we just don't have the, you know, staffing available.
Mr. Ralston, did you have a comment?
Just a question, so on the city business licenses, what is the penalty or the process? If they don't have one, is it just no harm, no foul? Until they get one, is there?
I believe the, I mean, the process with someone that would be compliant is informing them, you need to acquire this city license, and then they apply for it, and it's a, it's a shall issue type of a relationship, it's not.
There is no penalty.
Yeah. So if somebody didn't want to have a business license, it really doesn't affect them until it goes through the court system, which is a lengthy, obnoxious process?
That is correct, I mean, the only thing, and I'd need to talk with Don and get his, I mean, I can, I could, again, take a more aggressive posture, probably within the building code and post no entries for properties that don't have certificates of occupancy. I think I'd have to do that, I think I would have to apply that equally, and I can tell you that there would be a number of businesses that would probably, it would, it panics people, I mean, I have done some no entries and things like that, it's, that's an intense letter to read, post it on your door, is I'm not allowed to go unless I'm resolving the issue that's stated on that letter, and I can't have customers here and things like that. And so we've generally, again, on that speed thing, we've normally take a slower approach that starts with, instead of starting with a posted, you know, formal letter, that then, you know, called the police, I mean, it's a regulation, but we've taken the courtesy letter and tried to work with, but in this, in the particular one that's talked about, we've taken the veer into the court, you know, part.
Adam, advise?
Noncompliance, and you said you had a no entry letter that you posted in the past, what length of time, from the time you let them know they were not compliant to?
Well, I've usually, in the past, I've done that in in situations where it was actually dangerous to enter the structure, not not simply because someone had not yet done, gone through that, I have not in the past, and again, this has been my posture as I've understood the intent of both my, you know, city administrators at the time as well as the board, but my posture has been that I've utilized that only in conditions where there was an actual danger present within the structure.
Okay, so if someone has not had a license for an extended period of time, such as the case that you guys were talking about, would you go in and inspect instead of waiting, while you're waiting on the injunction?
Yes, I mean, I think, and, you know, with Don's advice and stuff.
Because it's been so long.
Yeah, so, again, this is, and and Don, you'll have to, I don't have, I don't, as the, so I'm the building official for the city board, that's an official title within our regulations, I have the right to cause entry for certain circumstances, primarily those only of my own cause exist if I believe there is imminent danger. So I don't have the right to, for the purpose, in my understanding, for the purpose of causing a no entry or an inspection, I don't have the right to enter a business without being invited in or a home or any other structure, and I take that pretty seriously, I don't do it in the time that I've been here, which is many years now, I have not done that, I've only entered where I've had cause to enter. There's some variation there, if a police officer or firefighter invites me in because of cause, that's covered within our regulations, and I do enter in those times, otherwise, I'm invited in to a structure. Now, we have a system by the business license which imposes onto the the business owner the the duty to invite us in.
But if you didn't get a license.
Correct, correct, yeah. So you're not going to see in the past, for, I mean, and again, this is, this is stuff that ultimately could trickle down and change, that part, though, I would need more legal advice on, because I don't, I, you know, there's, even within my role, there are some rights and all, but there would be the potential need for a warrant, you know, to enter a structure for that.
Mr. Ross, did you have another comment?
So, so here's the question I have with the business license, so if they don't really have one, you go through the courts, maybe if you know about it, you know, I I feel like this is an ordinance we have in place that, I mean, without, that almost penalizes people for doing what they should do, like, if if I do what I should do, I mean, and they're not overly, I think they're twenty, twenty-five dollars a year, but if I'm like, I'm just going to do it without a business license, oh, there's not, but yet, if, then if I say, well, I want to actually do what I'm supposed to do, it's almost like I'm being penalized for doing, like, the law's in place penalizing the people because they're following the law, you know, so that's where my personal stance is, I would like to be a little more aggressive, is that because we're, you know, literally like, oh, you're not following the law, huh, you know, like, like, it's, it's a process, we're not going to, you know, bother you for a year and a half or do this or unless we, so, I mean, I feel like, you know, and we've talked about this for for public nuisances in the past too, the the ordinances are in place for the ones who want to follow the law, but the ones who don't necessarily, there's not a whole lot of, you know, by, what's the word I'm looking for, accountability, and it's, it's one of those, that we put these things in place, because if we have 100 people, 99 of them are going to follow it, but that one who's not, ah, you know, like, it's, maybe we'll deal with it, maybe we won't, no.
Are you, are you asking for a more aggressive enforcement?
That, that's the approach I would like, you know, now, the the thing that concerns me is like, you hit tight it earlier to maybe kindness if it, with its speed, I think we can still go a little bit quicker and still be kind, you know, about it, like, we don't have to be like, oh.
Yeah, and I don't want to cut any sort of dichotomy there, I mean, we are, like, one of the markers of our department is a goal to be friendly to everyone, even when we're encountering them in a situation they don't want to be engaging with us in, and so that won't stop, we, you know, we won't do that, though, I will say, what people, i- it's just a reality, what people interpret as kindness in those situations usually is permission to continue.
Continue to do the thing, and, you know, even like the tall grass, that's a tough one, because if I'm on vacation for two weeks, and it rains all two weeks, and I don't know that my gra, and so, yeah, so, I mean, I still think there should be some kindness there, like, hey, you've got 10 days to mow your grass, and if it's not mowed, and again, at the point they get the letters, when the grass is at 12 inches tall, so it's not like, I miss mowing for two days and I'm getting a letter because my grass is too tall.
Yeah, and as we've reviewed in other places, we're the least, like, on the grass, I don't, I feel like we are extending already our timeline by having a higher threshold, if you want to call it.
What thresholds do you typically see?
Yeah, there's some as low as six inches, which is shocking, but eight and 10 is more common than we're seeing. You know, we're not, I don't want to present any false ideas here, we're not getting out with a tape measure and, you know, measuring, so, I mean, this is like what's.
Probably 12 means 14, 15.
Yes, yes, so 12, yeah, 12 probably means, you know, yeah, 20 plus, or, you know, I mean, we're not, I'm not going to ask our, you know, code enforcement to come out and, you know, get real silly about stuff, obviously, we, we send letters when we feel very comfortable, it's, it's 12 inches.
It gets to 11 and a half and you just.
Yeah, we're just waiting, be here tomorrow.
I, I will say, you know, you guys are doing, like, usually when somebody calls me or I see something, I'll shoot the code enforcer or message, and she's always like, oh, yeah, you know, like, I already got a letter out on that one, or, you know, so she's, she's definitely.
Yeah, without question, we are diligently sending violations, I think what we're talking about is like the the second and third step, and I understand that, I'm not, there's certainly no attack sense, and we want, I, I want our department to be reflective of what, you know, the board wants and what Thomas as the city administrator is directing, and that's, that's where, that's where we want to be, so.
And one thing we talked about earlier, where you said, you know, potentially your department eventually down the road, maybe issuing summonses and things, I mean, I would love to explore that when you've done all your, your research on the pros and cons, and I'd like to, you know, hear something about that, the potential where you guys can write your own, you know.
Yeah, I think, no matter what, what I'm gathering from, you know, the conversation is that we need to do that additional research and look at how, you know, stepped up enforcement will affect our budget next year, I mean, this will have to be a, a conversation as part of that as well.
I got a question, can you come back to the board, because, again, it's hard for me to just fathom of, you can get away with it as long as somebody doesn't know, you know, but again, kind of the Albin Ross's comment of, you have people that are following the law, but it's okay for if I'm not getting caught, could you come back to the board, and I know it's going to probably cost a lot, but find out how much it would cost for maybe like a yearly inspection on businesses, and how much it would cost for having somebody dedicated for a business inspection yearly or something like that, and then, and again, I know it's probably going to be a lot, but if we're really trying to hold people accountable for doing what they're supposed to be doing, I think we might need to squeeze that and maybe go forward or say, well, maybe we can't, but again, it's, it's really hard for me to, we're punishing the people that are actually doing what they're supposed to be and letting it slide for people that, oh, I'm just going to get away with it because nobody knows about it. I mean, I'm not going to a restaurant and be like, oh, I don't see a business license, I'm going to call Kyle, you know, but if we can have some kind of accountability, because that's what we were talking about tonight, is some kind of accountability.
Yeah, I, I do think most of our businesses are compliant.
About probably 98%.
Yeah, or become compliant, but I, but I totally understand the question, and and the the question of annual inspections is reaches into other areas other than just business licenses, so.
Mr. Lee, of course, as per our conversation today, we realize that the taking care of the grass and the, and the, and the business licenses are not unimportant, but they pale in contrast to the complexity that we talked about of the, of the dilapidated buildings and the enormous amount of resources that would take to be aggressive in dealing with them, and I'll just kind of mention that, because I, I think that as we spoke today, i- it's a subject that we're really going to have to deal, if we're, if we're going to, if we're going to be more diligent and more or even more aggressive in, in dealing with these derelict buildings, that, that's another, that's another subject for another day, that's a, the amount of resources that it it would require to, to do that can be enormous as we, as we spoke, and so I just wanted to kind of.
Yes, it's, it's.
Talk that in here, and, and, and I, I think that tonight is probably not the best, we're not the best informed, but at some point along the way, if we're going, if we, if we are actually going to be more aggressive in dealing with derelict buildings, there's a, a world of complexities and a world of, of resources that we need to take real, real seriously and, and consider, I just wanted to kind of update everybody on, on our conversation.
Yeah, I, I think there are things that, you know, admittedly, we're able to press, press in and, you know, within the ordinances that exist already and things like that, and so I can, I can perceive that need and.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think our conversation is like, we need more ordinances, or we need to do, you know, more, to me, we already have the ordinance in places for tall grass, for public nuisance, for dangerous buildings, you know, and, and to the mayor's point, yeah, tearing down a building obviously costs more than hiring somebody to mow somebody's front yard, and, you know, that does need to be a consideration, but, you know, I also think, like, you know, we talked about today, there's a house in war II that a tree fell on it like five years ago, and it's literally in two pieces, and it sat there for five years, like, you know, that's something that probably shouldn't be there for five years, and whether it's they tear it down or the city actually has to abate it, you know, eventually, then, then, you know, that's something, and, and just because there's a dilapidated or dangerous building that's falling, doesn't mean the city's going to go out tomorrow and tear it down, I mean, there's still, a dangerous building has a lot more.
Yeah, there's a lot of steps built within the structure.
Mow your yard or in 10 days, we're going, you know, I don't think the tearing down a building is like, hey, you got to remove your, your dangerous building in 10 days or the city's coming and tearing it down, I mean, I think usually the timeline on those are six months to a year.
Yeah, I mean, it takes, it takes a while to get through all of the necessary notices and encumbrance reports, and, yeah, there's, there's a lot, yeah, and, and at the same time, I recognize there are areas where the, you know, pedal can be pressed a little more in effort towards the speed inside, and, and that's, I'm, I'm responsive to that, so I, I hear it.
Well, go ahead, go ahead, please.
I was going to say, just, just for anyone who is watching or listening, who, I could envision this, it not being super clear to everyone, what interest the city has in ensuring that these ordinances are followed, so when we talk about dangerous buildings, it's right there in the name, of course, the city wants to keep dangerous buildings, not be, I want to be safe, can you, and it's fine if you're not, if you don't, like, this is a great place to have this conversation, but I just thought it might be helpful for any listeners to, to be reminded why the city cares how tall your grass is, why the city cares if you have a business license, because I could envision someone has a small business who's like, what do you care if I have a business license, I'm not hurting anybody, I'm doing X, Y, Z, what, what interest do I have, why is this city interested in devoting resources to making me abide by this ordinance if I don't even know why the ordinance is there? Does that make sense?
Sure, yeah, yeah, and I think the same is. Sure, yeah, yeah, and I think the same is some, I mean, I've had literally that question put to me from someone regarding a dangerous building. Why, why do you care if it's my property, you know, just leave it alone? And, and it's a reasonable question and, and all. I think the reality is that with, when you live within a municipality, you know, it's a, it's a community of people who are, you know, making agreements in, in how they'll conduct themselves one with another, and they do that by electing you, and then ordinances are passed that are supposed to be reflective of how that community intends to treat one another, and then nuisance violations are defined within the regulation. And so, that, those can change, like, like I described it, you know, one city might say six inches is a nuisance to us, and we say it's twelve inches. They might think that's too lenient, but we think it's just right, you know? And so, the nuisance violations are not like a dangerous building. A dangerous building has more of a scientific approach, you know, there's, there's some data there that is more directly objective. I think nuisance data can be objective, but whether it should be a nuisance or not is determined by the board. And once it becomes on that list, then, you know, the, the reason, I think the reason why cities would have nuisance codes is to protect property values, to protect the general welfare and community, sense of community within a city so that you don't have trash all over properties and you have, you know, health stuff, but even before it gets to something that would be health related, they're more often related to just a general welfare and, you know, how people have decided to live together. And so, that really is the approach. Those can always change, this board can always assign or deregulate, you know, something from the nuisance code, and then it would no longer be sent as a violation, because we only do it based on whatever's adopted within that definition, so.
And then, related to that, am I right in assuming that the amount of revenue that's generated from issuing business licenses is far outstripped by the investment of resources by city staff in issuing them?
Not my direct department, but I could easily guarantee our twenty-five dollar business license fee does not cover our administrative costs.
And would that also presumably be the case with issuing nuisance violations?
Yes, we don't generate-
For anyone who may think that this is a way-
Absolutely, it's a good question. We do not generate revenue, even our permitting down to something, the, the city of Bolivar does not generate revenue in the sense of even funding the department that is associated with that task, whether it's business license, whether it's permitting, whether it's code enforcement, none of those generate a revenue that self-sustained or self-propagate that department, you know?
Yeah, and the, the history of that for cities, as far as derelict buildings is concerned, does not scour financially. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't balance out.
No, it's-
It's way, e- even if the, even if the, even if the city goes through the process of, of obtaining ownership of, of abandoned buildings that they have to hit, tear down, it's always a losing proposition right up front.
Yeah, if I think of it as dollar for dollar.
The, the ambiance of the, of the city has, creates, in, in, in total, creates enormous value.
Yeah, I don't wanna belabor the point by any means, but we have had tremendous success in even the last two years. People voluntarily demolishing structures, which is my ideal, that's, I mean, I thank the board for approving the budget that included last year, and then this year, dangerous building assistance funds, we're using those funds. That's people just voluntarily saying, I agree with you, it's dangerous, it needs to come down, I just need a little bit of assistance making that happen. And so, we are seeing some success in that for sure, and I'm thankful to the citizens that do that and take advantage of it, and we'd love for more of them. I think that money is well spent because we're joining with the person that is, you know, engaged in that on their own property.
Obviously, this is going to be a, a protracted discussion and a very complicated discretion to see all the, the complications of enforcement, and especially if, you know, I think, you know, we were talking about today, the, the complications and the expansive, of actually demolishing buildings and, and taking them down and-
Well, I can plan to get some data presented to Thomas and, and work with, with Don and the others in our department and, and-
I think we all agree that this is a, a conversation worthwhile to continue at some point.
I, I did have one more little question.
Head, Mr.-
About nuisance-
Just Ballard.
Can you tell off the top of your head, what are ordinances say about like trees or vegetation that are growing over roads or blocking traffic?
Uh, we have, we have some stuff we're working on, and so, I've got, I'm getting it crossed in my head. The intent, though, is the plane of the street and twelve feet, that, that is the responsibility of the, the owner of the property to maintain that out of the roadway. So, you imagine a vertical plane from the edge of the pavement, whether it's a curb or just the edge of the asphalt, and then twelve feet up at a minimum. So, we don't wanna eliminate all like canopy of trees over streets, I think that's something that, you know, is nice within neighborhoods, but in that. So, I, I've gotta get back into whether it's word exactly like that, or that's some stuff that we're gonna be seeing in the future.
Is there provision in there for-
Or will be.
Uh, yeah.
Is there provision in there for more of an emergency application? Cause there's an intersection I know of that you can't see-
Yeah, I can take care of-
In the middle of the road to see what's coming around the tree, the tree's just overgrown and it's hanging down kind of.
Yeah, definitely, anything within a side triangle or that is causing a safety issue, if you text me a location or call me, I'll, we'll, we'll take care of that, yeah. Um, yeah, and we've, and we do that pretty regularly. I mean, we've had stop signs that are blocked, and we go and cut vegetation down and, and things like that. We just don't always see all of it, so I welcome people to pass that information along.
I'm just curious about the trees, cause I know that happens, kinda sneaks up on people and then if that was-
Yeah, I mean, if it was a more extensive, I don't know what exactly you're describing, but you know, if it's more extensive, like you gotta, you know, a hundred fifty-year-old oak that needs to come down because of it, it might be something we would bid out or something.
It's definitely dangerous. And I had one second question, kind of on the business license side. Have we had anybody that actually filed permits and done everything necessary for short-term rentals that we just approved like a year ago? Do we have a few of those?
Oh, yeah, we've had quite a few, I mean, I say quite a few, probably four or five. We have three going to the Board of Adjustment this month requesting special use permits to do short-term rentals. So, yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it, it has had traction. I mean, you know, I don't know what anybody particularly expected, but it's had about the traction I, I thought it would have, is quite a number of folks are doing it, even if they're not using them for short-term, they're getting that upfront kinda, you know, special use permit so they can if they decide to.
Yeah.
Mr. Lee, thank you so much. We'll certainly be hearing more about this. Okay, Alderman comments? Just the, do any of the-
We got them all out.
We have commented ourself out of breath.
Almost. Kyle, let you, or maybe Thomas, do we know where we're at on the signage on the square? The, the parking signs and the wifi signs? I know they're in process and you guys are busy, I was just curious.
Yeah, it's, it's really just a matter of, and I'm, with Thomas a few weeks ago, or maybe a week or so ago, but it's just been a matter of, of projects coming that have increased priority. We discovered a number of road issues, we discovered a couple of issues that needed to be resolved before a pavement overlay crew comes in. The, the welcome sign took us out of that. I mean, I think at one point I said those might be done by March thirtieth, so, they didn't, maybe I meant twenty-sixth, I don't know, you have to go back and see if I was quoted on that, but nah, just making that in jest, but, but the intent is to get back to that project as quickly as possible. We have, we're working with the dog park that has some timeliness, that has bumped that down a little bit lower, you know, and that was just us discussing what should be the priorities at this time. I still hope we'll do it this year, though, so. We have some of the cores already drilled, we have material, we're, we're just trying to fit in the schedule where it's appropriate, so.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Okay, with the Alderman comments out of the way, we will, or did, did, have, did we wanna mention anything about the MML conference, Mr. Elford?
Yeah, we, MML conference is scheduled for September fifteenth through seventeenth, and we have several staff members calling.
Okay, I'd like to go myself.
Yes, sir.
All right. I always stumble over this, cause it seems so odd that I am entertaining a motion to go into executive session.
Yes, I would like to move that we go into executive session pursuant to RSMO six ten thousand zero two one, sub paragraph one, legal actions, cause of action or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorney preceded immediately by a five-minute break.
Second.
And all, I see, don't have, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Wilson.
Aye.
Aye.
Sagasen.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
With seven ayes, we are now going into executive session with a five-minute break.